Good evening. I think we should make a start, so could you take your seat, please? Good evening, everyone. Today's LAC meeting is open to the public. A warm welcome to all of you here, both in the room and those of you watching online. My name is councillor Andrew Sanger. I am the chair of the South West Local Area Committee. Before I ask other councillors to introduce themselves, I'll hand over to the committee clerk to read out their housekeeping arrangements.
Thank you very much, Chair. Please, can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the council staff present. The assembly point is on the grassed area to the side of the car park outside. The toilet facilities are situated to the back of the room, signposted there. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcast via the council's website. The meeting is also a trial of the hybrid format, which means that we have online participants that have joined us on Zoom. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room in person or online, you are consenting to be filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. One final thing to mention, we have hearing loops available. If you would like to use one, please let one of the members of staff know. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. As I said, I'm councillor Andrew Sanger. I'm councillor for Fullwood Ward, and I chair the South West LAC, so I'm just going to go around the table and let people introduce themselves, starting with my laptop.
I'm councillor Tim Huggan. I'm councillor for Crooks and Crossford, and I am deputy chair of the LAC.
I'm Barbara Masters, councillor for Ecclesall Ward.
I'm Roger Davidson, and councillor for Ecclesall Ward.
And councillor Jarison, councillor for Dorant Topley, Chair of Western Street, seeing him, councillor.
Councillor Colin Ross, also councillor for Dorant Topley Ward.
Hi, I'm Denise Devoto. I'm the South West Local Area Committee manager.
Hello, I'm John Turner from Democratic Services.
I'm councillor Sue Alston. I'm one of the other Fullwood councillors.
Hello, and I'm Cliff Woodcraft. I'm one of the other Fullwood councillors.
Hello, I'm Ruth Wilson, a Crooks and Crossford councillor.
And hi, I'm Minesh Parak. I'm another Crooks and Crossford councillor.
Hi, Nick Hamilton, Head of Communities.
Thank you very much. Before we proceed with the agenda, I'd like to explain how this evening's meeting will work. To start with, we'll deal with the formal business of apologies, declarations, and minutes of the last meeting. We will then have public questions and answers for 30 minutes, and then we will move to the report of the South West LAC proposed spending from the LAC budget for 2022/23, which Denise Devoto will present. After that, we will move into breakout groups to discuss the priorities outlined in the proposed spend for the LAC budget. The breakout group will be for 45 minutes. After the breakout sessions, councillors from each table will quickly feed back from the discussions. We'll then move to agreeing the proposed spend. So with that, can we move on to item two, apologies for absence?
Yes, Chair. Received apologies from councillor Martin Smith, and we understand that councillor Shafak Mohammed may be attending a bit later.
Okay, thank you. Item three, exclusion of the public and press?
No items, Chair.
Thank you. Item four, declarations of interest, so I need to ask any councillors whether they wish to declare an interest in any of the items of business on the agenda. If not, that's fine, thank you. Okay, item five, the minutes of the previous meeting. Can we approve as a correct record the minutes of our last meeting on the 17th of March 2022? Can we agree with that? Thank you. Okay, item six, public questions and petitions. We have received a number of questions in advance, and for those in attendance, I will invite the questioners in the room to address the committee with their questions in turn. And we'll then deal with any online participants, and then we'll deal with any other questions if we have the time. So... Sorry, sorry, I will try and speak up, sorry, sorry. Okay, public questions, I'm going to call the people in order that we received them. So, where's my phone? Is there a room in mind? So, people, go to the microphone by Nick over there. So, can we start with Chris Cutford, please?
Hello, everyone. I can't remember the exact wording, but Andrew, I think it was something like this. What do you consider to be the key success factors for the local area committees, not just this one, but across Sheffield as a whole?
Thank you. I mean, I think as people know, LACs were set up last year, so they came in in May last year, so we've had just over a year of them. They came in because the majority group at the time, it was very much a response to the big city conversation. It was about involving more local people in decision-making and making sure that councillors were listening to local communities. Seven LACs were established across the city, using the same boundaries as we'd had for the area neighbour partnerships and before that, the community assemblies. So, we'd had a continuity in terms of boundaries, in terms of previous ways the council working. They clearly aimed at encouraging active participation, and that includes these four public meetings a year, but certainly not limited to these. And it was very much about engaging with people, making sure we're listening to people, but hopefully it's about empowering local people and communities, and that we can be involved, that the council can be closer to communities. Now, clearly, without being too political about this, this was set up a year just before the public voted in a referendum to move to committees. So, what we've had is we've had a year of LACs as the council has moved away from cabinets to committees. So, I think the challenge now is to understand how the LACs will work alongside the policy committees. I mean, speaking personally, I think there's a huge opportunity for councillors to be more involved, that they can be involved at the LAC level in terms of making sure that their communities are listened to and engaged with, but also all 84 councillors are able to work with the policy committees. So, from a councillor point of view, the councillors should be much more involved across the range of work that the city council does. I think from a community point of view, having LACs and having an officer team in each LAC means there's an easier point of contact for the public, and I would hope that now that we've got community plans agreed, that you can see that the LAC will be able to respond to the community's priorities. Clearly, the amount of delegated powers and budgets have started off quite small. So, I think what you'll see today is very much the community plan that we agreed back in March, and that today we'll be discussing the delivery plan. But a lot of that delivery plan, if it's to succeed, will need to involve the communities, but we'll also need to work much closer with other parts of the council to lever in other sums of money, because, you know, the £100,000 we're talking about today, for example, does not go very far and is not a huge part of the council's £300 million net budget. So, I think we need to see it in that context. But I think we made a reasonable start, but I'm hoping that over the coming months and years, the LACs will take on a bigger role in the city council. So, thank you for your question. Second question, could Alana Clark, please, go to the microphone and ask her question, please?
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chair. My name's Alana Clark. Chair, could I just put my question into context, because otherwise it might seem a little strange coming out of the ether, as it were. I live in Bingham Park, and I overlook the park, which I call the bottom park, as opposed to the old pudding greens. And it seemed that there was a policy last year where there was no cutting of lots of the park, and the centres of the park were allowed to grow wild, if you will, or grow as they will. And I think lots of people thought, oh, that's quite nice. There's still parts that are cut smooth. But then, that was 2021, but this year, the first cut remained the same as the previous year. But then, in June, June the 14th, that seemed to change, and a council worker called Pete, who was absolutely lovely, came and, with instructions to cut everything in the part that I overlook. And I actually intervened and asked that it not be done. So, I thought it was strange, because I've attended these meetings, I've never heard of a change of policy. So, that's the context. So, what I'm asking is, was there a council policy about a change in grass cutting practice in 2021? Has that changed since the first cut in 2022, in other words, in June of this year, where things changed? And if so, what is the policy? Because it seems to me there's been no consultation and no communication. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that question. Can I pass over to councillor Barbara Masters to answer the question?
Thank you, Andy. I mean, we discussed this already, but basically, the policy last year and Parks and Countryside have been actively working on biodiversity improvements around the city, including relaxed mowing, additional wildflower meadows, increased tree planting, naturalisation, additional sustainable drainage schemes, wildlife ponds, chemical reduction, recycling, waste minimisation in the host of other small projects, and the chances are you've seen the results of these dotted round Sheffield. Following the initial lockdown of 2020, that saw a huge increase in park usage and staffing challenges as a result of COVID, Parks and Countryside took the initiative to look at options to change previous longstanding grassland management using local site knowledge to relax grass areas in appropriate places, with the aim of increasing biodiversity, creating new grassland meadows, leading to a slightly more relaxed field for many sites while trying to balance the needs for general amenity grass for casual use and play. With approximately, I'll give you the figures, 47 hectares of amenity grass relaxed in 2020, a further 35 hectares relaxed in 21, with work going on with the aim of increasing changes further, although this is becoming harder as the majority of larger sites have now been modified. Though not financially led, the methods required to cut and collect the grass are more labour-intensive. The changes were driven by a desire to improve biodiversity in response to climate change, with changing demands on the majority of park users for a combination of naturalistic and general amenity landscape management. So, I mean, that seemed generally agreement. The changes in grassland management have been exceptionally well received, including many other core cities around the UK, so it's a national policy. We've received a few complaints, we've tried to respond and to change appropriately in Bingham Park. Now, the issue with Bingham Park is most of the site is sloping, and there are two flat patches used for informal recreational use. One of them is outside sort of Miss Clarke's residence, the other is at the very top of the park, and there have been issues with this, because with long grass, people, you know, children can't play ball games, people find it difficult to picnic, dogs' mess is not cleared up, and I've been there many a time when people have been complaining about the dog mess. So, there are issues with it. And in response to some people asking about could the flat areas be left unmoaned, Parks agreed, and it was, you know, I did ask for that, Parks responded to say they would try this year to keep flat areas mowed and leave wide fringes and all the sloping areas uncut, apart from autumn when they would clear it. Now, but the top site is not contentious, we're trying it out this year to see what responses. The bottom part is, because it's a very small patch, and some residents want it mown so that they can use it for their own purposes, other residents want it unmooned. And I have said that I would go to, I've met Alana, who represents the group that want it left uncut, and I've said that I would take her, what she wants, her plans for this, to the opposing group to see whether there is an overlap at all, because it could be that they're talking about two different areas, but I don't know without talking to them. And so, that's where it stands. Yes, there has been informal consultation, because people have responded to me as councillors, to other people, other park users have responded. So, the second part says, following the regular stakeholder meetings with Bingham Park Community Group, at the request of councillors, parks agreed to reduce the amount of naturalised area on the old Pitchen Path area and to three of the properties on Bingham Park Road, increasing amenity grass areas for general play. Councillors and Bingham Park Community Group agreed moving forward additional consultation on grassland management should be part of any further plans and changes. So, it is trying something different this year and see what the upshot is. But I should add, there are other initiatives in the part to increase biodiversity. This is just one part of it. Thank you, Andy.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next question is from Paul May. Yeah, I think the issue is whether we're projecting well enough or whether the microphone is picking up our voice. So, I think what we're going to say to people is either to lift it closer to people's mouths or to speak louder. I'm going to try to speak louder and upwards. Other people might find lifting it closer to their mouth might be better, but I think I'll just try and talk louder. Thanks. But thank you very much, Chris.
Okay. Loud enough at the minute? Give me a yes. So, I used to be a teacher, so I should be projecting. I said, have I got to use this? Yes, I have to use this. I've got an overall comment to make, first of all, which is that the pack which you see on the table, it must represent a great deal of hard work that's been done and a great deal of time that's been taken up as well. And I'd just like to say, well done to the people who have done it. It's also been written in a way that I can easily understand it as well. Great stuff. I've got two or three questions. First of all, is it possible to get to see the full written responses that were sent out to questions that were asked at the last meeting? Some of those questions, I thought, were really interesting. I expect the answers would have been interesting as well, but we hadn't got to see them. So, would it be possible to publish those at some point, and presumably answer the answer to these questions you're getting tonight? Secondly, you talked about involving the community, local community. Well, our existing ward forums, so I'm involved in Ecclesall Ward forum at the moment, so what will be their role in the future, linked with the councillors? It strikes me that it might be a model, it might be a model that I'd be keen to follow with the ward, to have ward meetings before the LAC meeting, and that surely would allow more communication between people in the ward and the LAC councillors. So, what's the idea about, what's the feeling about the future of existing ward forums? And thirdly, I'm interested to see that a source of information that crops up throughout the big document now and again, about data that was used to produce some of the plans, was used, is councillors' casework. Councillors' casework is mentioned as a source of data. I was just interested to know if that casework consists of occasionally just a few people's responses or a load of people's responses. I guess that would vary from case to case, but I was just interested in that, to see if it was a significant or a representative amount of information that came through to the councillors. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those questions. I think I'll do my best at making a stab at answers, and I'll look to colleagues if I've missed any points. But firstly, can I thank you for your kind comments about the papers? I think the thanks really need to go to Denise and Nick and Mubarak, who were involved in turning councillors' words into something much more sensible and readable. So, I think the thanks really is to the officers for preparing that and the hard work, the many hours that they put into those reports on. But very pleased to hear your kind words on that. In terms of, so your first question was about written responses, and yes, we do try to make sure that there is a record of questions, so I will chase that up. Can people still not hear me? Do I still need to get louder still? Okay, I'll go louder still. So, the issue of forums, and I would say that Ecclesall forum is excellent, has done a lot of good work over the years. Forums are not universal across the city, and they're not universal across the South West. So, in Crooks and Crosspool Ward, for example, there's a very well-established Crosspool forum and a very well-established Crooks forum. I know in my own ward, Fullwood, we don't have either a forum that covers the whole ward or the Crooks module of having two. So, I think I would say that one model doesn't work for all four of the wards. wards. I think it's for the wards to work out, you know, the communities to come together and work out what the best, the best way of working is. I mean, from my point of view, Ecosall Forum is a very important stakeholder for the South West LAC, and I'm very pleased that there's, there remains a good working relationship between the forum and, and the Ecosall Ward councillors. I think it's a reasonable suggestion you make in terms of, of aligning meetings. I'm not sure if it should quite be running into this meeting because, you know, this meeting, it has potentially a two-hour meeting, do you want a one-hour meeting then a half-hour gap? I don't know, it seems, seems a big commitment to have all the meetings on the same day, but I think some sort of way of aligning it so that things raised at a forum can then be raised at a LAC public meeting seems reasonable, but I'm not convinced it has to be on the same day. Sorry.
That's not what Paul meant, I think Paul was, not on the same day, but say the week before.
Oh yeah, the week before, but as I say, I think that makes much more sense, yes. Yes, so, so I think it comes down to, I think it comes down to knowing us agreeing our diaries in advance, so you, you know when the public meetings are. Now, we're nearly there, as I say, we're a year in, we have, it's been agreed which window the various LAC meetings are, so I think that information can be shared. And so I, I think it's a good idea that if we can get the various community forums to, to know when they are and to be able to feed into the process. In terms of, in terms of where the, where the community plan came from, clearly you're right that the survey was the main, was the main place the information came from, but we felt, although our survey, you know, although the South West survey had the most responses, we were concerned that the responses were not necessarily representative, they hadn't been gone out, they were very much, we asked everybody to respond, some people chose, chose to and some people chose not to. So we felt to make it more representative, we would use councillor's knowledge, and that councillor's knowledge, as you have rightly said, has come from their involvement with community groups, but also their involvement with casework. I would hope that no councillor would take an individual piece of casework and say, well, that's representative of, of all the issues in the ward. Councillors need to, you know, represent the whole of their ward and not just, you know, one or two, one or two voices. But yes, you, you make a valid point. Clearly, clearly the community plan was developed from a range of information sources, but as I say, the main one was the community survey. We just felt that because it was so overwhelmingly highways and traffic, we thought it was important to make sure there were other, other subjects came in, and I think that's been borne out as we've gone back to the community. I think they'd be quite pleased, it's a more, more balanced report than it, than it could have been. But I think you've made, raised some, some very good points there. Have I covered that question? Okay. We still, we still have, we still have ten minutes. So written answers, I say, I will chase the written answers and make sure that they're included in, in the pack. Okay, has anybody got any, any quick questions they want to ask either myself or, or the panel very quickly? Do you want to go to the microphone and say? No, you know, because it's being broadcast, you won't.
Okay. Yeah, Steel Wilson, Lodge More. It's a general question really, but I think it should be brought up at this point. With regards to the redevelopment of the leisure centres across the city. Now, the programme for this, for the whole of the city, was that three leisure centres would be demolished, starting with Springs in 2023, finishing in 2025, Concord starting in 2027 and finishing in 2029. And the leisure centre at Hillsborough was to be demolished, but what we're interested in and what I'm interested in is the indoor bowling facility, which was, we've been going five years now trying to get one in Sheffield. And, and meeting with the council over this period of time, when this programme was brought about, that the leisure centres would be revised, we were told that a bowling centre would be provided in either one of two places, and that was Concord or Springs. So we did a survey of all the bowling clubs in Sheffield, and the response that we got from the bowling community was that Springs would be the ideal place and the ideal choice for a permanent bowling facility in Sheffield. The city's size of Sheffield should have six permanent bowling facilities, indoor bowling facilities, and we are a city of sport and we do not have one. And so I was asking the committee, I know it's covering the South West, but I believe it, it concerns all the likes in Sheffield, what is the position now regarding the web proposal for Springs? Because it should be starting in 2023, and I've not heard anything from the council regarding when it's going to start. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr Wilson, for that, that question. I mean, we're clearly, you know, we're, we're, we're lacking, clearly that's a question about the leisure facilities citywide. Under the new system, we do at least have the advantage that we've got, between, between the councillors, we, one or two of us will be on that relevant committee, so we'll make sure it's taken up. But has anybody got, has anybody over, at least partially answered?
Yeah, Mr Wilson, I mean, it's been a while since I went to, sorry, it's been a while since I went to Stockbridge, but when I did go to Stockbridge six years ago to visit the leisure centre because of the issues around its closure, there was a bowling, indoor bowling, so are you saying it's no longer in existence, that? Because it seemed quite a well-maintained facility.
Stockbridge, yes, but it's something like fifteen, sixteen miles away from the centre of Sheffield. What I'm talking about is, I go to Crown Green Bowling during the summer, like most bowlers, and then in the wintertime, we play on temporary mats at Graves Leisure Centre. We have a league there with something like twenty, twenty-one teams. And when people can't do Crown Green Bowling, when they're too old to do it and they can't, have not got the physical capabilities to do that, they still want exercise and social activity. And this is what the councillors are talking about now, they want more involvement of the community in what's happening in the community. And since we've had Covid, the social side of life is affecting a lot of people, especially older people. And, and indoor flat green bowling is a wonderful sport for older people to be involved with, not just older people, but younger people as well, everyone, every age. And this city has not got a provision for those. The facility at Stockbridge is run by the community. This is something that Sheffield council should be doing. The city of Sheffield should be ashamed of itself for not providing a facility like this. And as I say, I have started this, I started with this campaign five years ago, and we're told one after another that we can't do this, we can't do that, but wait because we're going to remodel and look at all the leisure centres in Sheffield. So this was, and I, this is an ideal opportunity for a facility to be built, and we have been promised that by the council that there will be one. And what I'm saying is, it should be at Springs, because Springs is a central point of the city, because the bowlers are mostly on this side of the city, and they said if it's built at Concord, they will not go, and that sport will disappear. And what you're doing to the community is you're not providing a part of that community with a facility to socialise, to have health, et cetera.
Can I suggest that this question and this point is referred to that relevant council committee? Because at the moment, it's stuff that's out for consultation, i.e. this is our views about how the council, and by the way, I didn't draw up that plan, that was under the previous kind of strong leader cabinet model, but now I'm moving to a committee system. In terms of future leisure services, because clearly SIV will not be the provider, that's something that's been kind of stated publicly, and clearly investment is required in leisure facilities. I don't know if councillor Austin wants to say anything further.
So, so I've also, councillor Austin wants to say something first.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that question. It's not an issue I was actually aware of until now this minute. However, I would fully support sort of what you're saying, having an uncle of ninety-two, who's a very keen bowler, I think, I, I understand what you're saying about it being a really important exercise for a lot of older people and indeed some younger ones as well. And I know that the Communities Committee on which I sit is due to look at some of the issues around the city's leisure facilities in the near future. Now, I don't know yet because I haven't got all the papers about what the details are, but I will certainly raise that. And if you wish, I'll alert you to when the meetings are so that you can come and ask that question of that committee, which if not, I'm happy to do that on your behalf.
Can I just clarify then, that the programme that was issued regarding the leisure centres and what was going to happen to them, the programme that was set out there, I thought that was, had been passed. Do you mean to say, is that, is that on hold?
I know that the, an issue around the leisure facilities is due to come to a committee shortly, to our committee, but we haven't yet been issued with the detail of what the issues are. But I will get back to you when I know, and I will certainly ask appropriate questions following on from today's meeting.
I, I, I think that's as far as we can go. I think we should take councillor Mohammed's view that we should, we should move Mr Wilson's question, we should, to, to the appropriate committee and make sure that Mr Wilson gets a, gets a full response, but also that Mr Wilson should be informed when that committee is meeting and, and make sure he sees the agenda. But we will refer his question to the committee chair in the meantime anyway, because it is a, a question that's going to be relevant to a lot of people in the South West, so thank you for the question.
Not only to this, the South West, but to the whole of Sheffield. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else for a question? Sorry, at the back.
Okay, I'm Tim Lewis, I'm from Crooks, can you hear me? So my question's concerned with low-traffic neighbourhood in Crooks. I want to know what were the baseline data which were gathered, which informed the implementation of a low-traffic neighbourhood? I want to know why Crooks was fingered for a low-traffic neighbourhood and who made that decision? I want to know why the implementation of what looks like a very bad set of concepts has been so shambolic. I'll give you an example. I walked up Spring Wall Road this evening, there's now a one-way section in Spring Wall Road, which I don't think there was yesterday, I saw someone grabbing straight down into it, that's actually extremely dangerous and the danger has been exacerbated by the very poor way in which this scheme has been put together and implemented. Fourthly, I want to know what would be the mission of success or failure for this scheme? And firstly, I want to know how long residents of Crooks are going to have to put up with it. Could you hear that?
Thank you very much for, for those questions. And I think this, this is part of, of the challenge of, of this new web working, because clearly the decision to, to, to go for those two low-traffic neighbours was taken by the cabinet member back, back at the end of last year. So clearly we've moved from a cabinet system to a committee system. The Transport Committee has yet to receive a report about, to receive a report looking at what has happened in terms of, in, in terms of how, how the initial period has been. I know it is not on the agenda for September, so I know it will not be coming to committee until after September. That's probably all I can say from a Transport Committee boy. When we knew it was a big issue in the Crooks area, we as a LAC made sure that we carried out more consultation, there were three drop-in sessions a couple of weeks ago, which we had got an awful lot of very useful feedback from residents of Crooks, which I'm, I'm optimistic that the highways and transport department will, will, you know, are able to look at that information in terms of reviewing, reviewing whether, whether this, whether this scheme should continue or, as I say, to, to, to look to see what impact it's had and whether, whether the scheme should, should continue. I'm looking to the, the three Crooks Across Paul councillors, do you want to add anything to that? So, so, sorry. Tim personally, Ruth?
I'm not sure what the baseline data was, we only had a briefing because we asked, when we asked about a tweet. I'm not sure what the baseline data was, we only got a briefing that me and Ruth and Maruth was in on, as a result of asking about a tweet from a cabinet member's assistants about cycle storage on Crooks, and we asked where it was going to be, and they said, oh, it's part of the active travel neighbourhood. Haven't you had a briefing as the councillors? We did ask about baseline data, there didn't appear to have been any. The reason why it's been picked is because the number of people appeared to have asked for that area, whereas I thought that other areas are more suitable. So there's a whole host of questions on that. One of the things I did ask, the Transport Committee Chair was Mazur Iqbal, I asked that there would be a further meeting once all the scheme was in place, so there can be some feedback, so that we can have a look at the scheme in its whole, when it's in. There are certain things that I'm very pleased are happening, such as the crossings, the school streets and cycle storage. The rest is for the residents of Crooks to make sure they make their voice heard.
Okay, Ruth?
Yeah, I agree with what Tim said about lack of information from councillor's point of view as the scheme was being developed, and that it's, it's been upsetting because if there'd been more co-design of the scheme along the way, I think we as councillors would have insisted on there being more points of engagement for the public as the scheme was being designed. So, I mean, it is what it is now and we're in the consultation period, so all we can say about that really is, is to encourage everybody to take part in the consultation fully and submit all your comments, and don't be afraid of submitting comments on more than one occasion. So if, you know, if more problems crop up on your street, then get on there again and submit more comments. If you change your mind about something and actually think, okay, it was a good idea maybe after all, then put that in as a comment. The, the consultation will only work if people really say what they feel about it, good or bad or neutral. We're a bit concerned that we're not hearing a lot of the quieter voices in the community, so we've held these events and we've, we've heard a lot of concern, deep concerns and some anger, and we've heard some people who are very, very positive about the scheme, but we haven't heard from a lot of people who, well, as I said, the quieter voices, who wouldn't necessarily come to a meeting like that feeling passionate about it one way or the other. So that's a bit of a concern and one that we will be picking up with, with the transport team. And we will be rigorously ensuring that the results of the consultation are properly, properly analysed and properly weighted, and that the outcome decision of that is, I think, meets our experience of how the scheme has been going as well. So I don't know if Minesh wants to add anything as well.
Okay, okay, Minesh. And yeah, finally, just completely agree with what both my colleagues have said, finally, also on how success of the scheme will be measured, so what officers are saying, what I think we're saying, as well as that will be both qualitative and quantitative, so both how people are receiving it, how it's going down, how it is working for people. And I think what we're really keen to see is that it's an ongoing consultation, that changes do happen in real time rather than we wait if something isn't working. Also, if things need to be added, please do let us know, please do say, because I think we're really keen for it to be amended as well. But also in terms of quantitative, there are a number of areas across the active neighbourhood area which are being regularly monitored for traffic flows. I think they're trying to assess whether we are seeing a reduction in traffic flows, whether we are seeing more people transition to different modes of transport, whether we are reducing the number of journeys for some people who are able to. So there, there are quantitative measures being analysed as well. I'm also keen for us to track, you know, air pollution levels, I think. There are aims of the scheme to benefit allies, create greener, cleaner streets, I think. I want to see that be more measurable as well. I think that is successful, the scheme for me is trying to, you know, benefit in the area.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'm going to draw the public questions session to, to a close and, and move on to item seven, which is the report of the South West LAC proposed spending 2022-2023. I hand over to the area manager to I'll hand over to the area manager to present the budget report.
Okay, thank you Chair. Alan, sorry, could we have the presentation please? Thank you, thank you. Okay, so I've just got a few slides to talk you through, just to demonstrate to you how we've arrived at the proposed spend that has been included in the report. Alan, could you move on to the next slide please? Okay, if you actually want to read a copy of the report while I'm talking you through this, you can find it on page twenty-seven of the report pack. Okay, so, as you know, from the community plan, we have three key themes that we have identified. So currently, the proposal for spending on transport and highways, we have identified up to two and a half thousand per ward for specific transport and highways projects, community speed watch initiatives of up to five thousand pounds. We only intend to utilise that part of the budget if we are unable to secure any further funding from the Police and Crime Commissioner. If we can do that, then obviously that will free up more of the LAC budget. We're proposing to spend up to fifteen thousand on active travel initiatives. Elements of this may include safer cycle parking, storage and installation of cycle pumps, the potential for a collective traffic regulation order for double-yellow line implementation. Now, this is for one double-yellow line scheme per ward of up to ten thousand pounds, and potentially signage for schools that particularly focus on no idling of cars around the area, seeking to reduce the air pollution, and the proposed spend there is up to ten thousand pounds. So the proposed spend in total for transport and highways is fifty thousand pounds. Okay. Next slide please, Alan? Thank you. Okay, so the proposed spend for the local environment element is up to fifteen thousand pounds to address dog fouling. This is likely to include signage, additional bins, plus a communication campaign in trying to promote more responsible dog ownership. There's also a proposal to spend up to ten thousand pounds to support the Friends of Parks groups, to support any potential projects that maybe the Friends groups are looking to do across the area. And then finally, is to support the rewilding to promote biodiversity and enhancing the neighbourhoods of up to ten thousand pounds. So some of the initiatives could include wild flowering planting. That gives the proposed allocation of thirty-five thousand for local environment. We have another option on there, basically as a backup, if we don't spend, you know, all of that thirty-five thousand pounds as we are proposing, then we are looking to potentially support community renewable energy as a project, to try and scope out the council-owned assets and other public assets in the South West LAC area that could be used for energy projects, and we would be looking to identify a budget of up to five thousand pounds. Next slide please, Alan? Okay, so on the final theme, community and neighbourhoods, I'm sure many of you in the room know we work really well in partnership with our People Keeping Well partner, AGUK, and towards, you know, dealing with this element of the theme, we're looking to spend up to ten thousand pounds to tackle isolation and loneliness within the older community in the area. This could include funding the People Keeping Well activities such as friendship lunches or any other activities. We have supported Crooks and Crosspool with friendship lunches in the last financial year that have been... Sorry. I'll let the lady ask the question herself, okay?
There's a bit of confusion. I was told at a previous LAC meeting when I asked a question that Crooks and Crosspool don't sit within the South West, supported by AGUK, we sit within ZEST, which sits within the central, whatever. So there is confusion around this issue, is what I want to raise.
Right, okay, okay. Andrew, do you have any comments on that? In terms of friendship lunches for Crooks and Crosspool, we have definitely funded them in the last twelve months.
Yeah, on the friendship lunches, don't you worry, I'm making sure, and I'm sure my colleagues are as well, that Crooks and Crosspool receives its first allocation and has done in the last year, and we've paid for a friendship lunch at the Bull to help set up the initiative, they're going on at Crosspool, so there are initiatives. So though it falls outside that remit, it doesn't fall outside what we're funding as a LAC. That's the thing that needs to be abundantly clear.
So we are getting a little off topic, but I'm hoping that councillor Ross can sort of explain the situation clearly.
Thank you, I'll give it a go. Initially, when the People Keeping Well initiatives were set up, they were more isolated, and you're quite right, ZEST has had an area that would include going up the hill into Crooks area. And in the South West, the initial People Keeping Well was based round Totley, and it then expanded to Dorham Bradway, and then it's expanding to the whole of the South West. So there is a little bit of overlap in the evolution of the projects, and now we've got the local area committees. I think there'll be work to make sure that the areas of the different People Keeping Well initiatives align more closely to the local area committee boundaries. But you've been reassured by the fact that we have been supporting through the South West People Keeping Well, the friendship lunches at the Crosspool Tavern, I believe, yeah.
Okay, very briefly, Minesh?
Yeah, just because I've also been looking into this as well, if you can drop me an email or if I can take the details afterwards, I can send you a briefing on what ZEST do cover in Crooks, if that's helpful as well.
Okay, Keita, get us back on track.
Okay, okay, thank you everyone. Okay, so that's actually covered the proposed spending that's actually in the report. Just wanted to cover one last slide of budgets that we do have in the South West that are not linked to the LAC budget of a hundred thousand pounds. So we have ward pots that are available for all four wards. You can see the figures on the screen there. Sorry, next slide, Alan? Sorry, that's my fault. Thank you. Okay, so just to quickly go through them, Crooks and Crosspool have an allocation of three thousand eight hundred and seven pounds, Dorham Totley, three thousand eight hundred and sixty, Echolsall, three thousand and seventy, and Fullwood, three thousand and twenty-one. Now, for those of you who have been to previous LAC meetings, you may have noticed that that is half of the amount that we had last year. That is unfortunately, we don't have the additional budget. Last year they were doubled as a one-off, so they have gone back to their original amounts. And the ward pots are used to support community activities, and the councillors will make decisions on applications that have been received. If you are involved in a community group and you haven't received an email from us about the ward pots, then please do let us have your details this evening and we can make sure that you do receive that information through. Just to quickly cover on the community infrastructure levy funds, this is a net rolling balance, and these funds have been accruing since two thousand and fifteen. So Crooks and Crosspool, we currently have twenty-five thousand one hundred and eighty, Dorham Totley, fourteen thousand seven hundred and forty, Echolsall, sixteen four seven seven, and Fullwood, sixteen four oh nine. This funding is used to support infrastructure projects in the individual wards. So for example, Dorham Totley have recently used some of their funding to purchase an additional vehicle activated sign which has been installed at Longline in Dorham. So, you know, some of their funding has already been used for that element. Okay, thank you, Alan. Sorry, just one, then also last thing that I wanted to mention, in the plan on page twenty-nine, the delivery plan that Paul May mentioned, I'm not intending to go through that in finite detail with everyone, but if you have any questions once you've read it, then obviously please do get in touch with the LAC team. What we've tried to do is set it out so that we prioritise things that we feel we can achieve this year, things that we may be able to achieve if we have sufficient resources and sufficient funding that we've managed to pull in from other areas, and then anything that we feel needs to be carried forward into the next financial year. A hundred thousand pounds sounds a large amount of money, sadly it doesn't go as far as we all hoped it would. So as we move into the breakout sessions, Andrew will explain further, but you will have a chance to obviously share your views on what's been proposed, but thank you for listening, everyone.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're now moving on to the breakout session. So as Denise has just said, within the South West LAC community plan, which was developed through community consultation and agreed at the last public meeting, we identified three main priorities, transport and highways, local environment and community and neighbourhoods. And under each priority, the consultation has identified key areas of focus, so we're now going to break into discussion groups to look at those priorities. The purpose of these groups is not to change the area of focus, these were agreed back in March, but consider what we can do together to address them in the coming months. The committee have set out, we've just heard of the budget being allocated against these themes which Denise has just presented. We need to be realistic in terms of the limits placed upon us in respect of allocated budgets and staffing resources, so we only have a hundred thousand pounds for this financial year and a team of three staff. So note in some instances, rather than allocating funds or delivering a solution, the LAC needs to influence others to address particular issues as either the necessary budgets or a specific remit. We also want to hear from residents as to how you may be able to play a part. After the breakout sessions, each councillor will be asked to very briefly feed back the discussions from the main points that their table has discussed. So I'm handing over to Denise, I think she's got something to say.
Just looking around the room, Alana, could I ask you to join the table in front of you please, if that's okay, because they're both on local environment, just so that you're not on your own. So perhaps, Sue, I know you were going to be on the local environment, we already have Minesh and Tim that are aligned to sit on there, I don't know if you want to join one of the other groups?
Just simply wherever you can.
Okay, okay, all right, that's great. Just to explain briefly, on the tables in front of you, there are copies of the breakout forms that you will, you know, we will ask you to go through. The table over in the far corner there, you've chosen to potentially discuss all themes. The other tables around the room, we've got, you know, you've chosen a particular theme that you would like to have a discussion on. If you don't feel confident in being involved in the discussion, but you still do want us to listen to your views and share your thoughts etc, please fill in the form and hand it back to one of the officers, and then we will obviously collate that feedback after the meeting. But please, share your views, we want to hear them from you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the councillors can now move to their allotted tables. And we've got forty minutes?
Yeah.
Forty minutes? Okay, okay, Keita, 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 wrap up. So the next thing is we're going to, the councillors are going to, very, very briefly, sixty seconds per table. Yeah, very briefly, because we're running behind time because I've been talking too much. We're going to very briefly go through the table, so we're going to start with Colin Ross.
Thank you very much. My table was dealing with transport and highways issues. The Crooks active travel scheme was raised in that. There were comments for and against, but there was concern about the lack of consultation, how consultation was conducted and lack of emergency service access up certain roads. But we also discussed dangerous junctions and ideas for where yellow lines could go. Springvale Road was raised in particular, and there was consensus that this was a Crooks councillors' listen, there was consensus that this was a junction that certainly needed looking at, and we've got notes on that. Desire to get the twenty mile an hour zones rolled out as quickly as possible, and we also discussed Operation Park Save, nothing to do with green parks, but parking, dangerous parking that the police are operating, and action can be taken against dangerous parking, not just inconsiderate parking, but where it's dangerous. There is a portal on your website that you can log items of dangerous parking, and I'm sure they'll be able to say more about it if you ask them at the end. And I think that's my sixty seconds.
Colin, sorry, just to come in there. Kevin, I do need to touch base with you to get a further meeting set up about that, so I will be in touch, and including Tammy as well, so I'll be in touch next week. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you Colin. Can I move on to Cliff?
Thank you Chair. Yes, we're looking at active travel. So, yeah, we're looking at the bikes issue, and we do need somewhere safe to store these bikes, I mean, especially the electric bikes, they're getting pinched, they're high value, secure storage is needed for that, that is really important. We're a little bit amused about the cycle pumps, whether they would actually be used very much, whether they're good value for money or not. They're probably not too expensive nonetheless, but I think it's an issue that we need to think about, and if we do have some public cycle pumps, where will they be placed and why aren't people bringing their own cycle pumps? people bringing their own cycle pumps with them as part... Sorry. Why aren't people bringing their own cycle pumps, together with their tyre repair kits as any bicycle user knows they need? So anyway, there's that. Electric bike hire scheme in Inverness seems to be working well, and we need to learn from that and other places where it has worked well. As I say, if we have electric bikes, where will we leave them? And South West is a good place to trial it, we've got a mixture of level routes and also hilly routes. We need to try and encourage young people to use public transport, and bikes and walking, rather than buying cars and the like, because we need to keep cars off the road as far as we possibly can. And yeah, one suggestion was to have free bus travel for young people. There's been an increase in traffic in Banner Cross, and there's quite a few hazards there. And there's a general feeling that something needs doing to make the junction safer there, and people have had difficulty with the council in getting them to do something, so I think that is something that needs looking at.
I think that sounds like 60 seconds to me. All right, sorry. I think we do need to speed up. Is there anything else, very briefly?
Carpool systems as a possibility for reducing the number of cars.
Thank you very much. Can we move on to local environments? Shall we start with Minesh?
Yeah, I think I'm covering it. Both of us, and I'll try and keep to 60 seconds. Dog fouling, actually, we found from our sample of two, wasn't a particular issue, wasn't a particular hotspot, I think particularly in Doran Totley. We heard that they were quite considerate dog owners, that may be anecdotal, but yeah, we had a good discussion about the role of signage versus better bin placement, whether signage would actually have the impact or whether we should just need more bins. I think we got some very detailed notes on that, and that was very good. Friends of Parks groups, good discussion about how we can make them, how we get more, how we can identify different parks and green spaces for more community involvement and community ownership, as well as existing Friends of Parks groups, how they can have better outreach. For example, if some only use social media or Facebook, or if some don't, and if some do have access to their notice board and some don't, I think there was willingness to see whether we can use some of the funds to increase the communication and accessibility of Friends of Parks groups, as well as starting new ones. And also saying that Friends of Parks groups could be a really good way to feed through rewilding and wildflower planting projects too as well. And then general support for community, investigating scope on community renewables, including, you know, small projects, as well as mapping out feasibility of it, and whether that's, you know, ground source heat pumps, or solar panels, or energy efficiency measures, I think, willingness generally. Hopefully that's 60 seconds.
That's great. Okay, Sue?
So I think Jo's got our notes.
Sorry, it doesn't say that on my thing. Okay, so move on to community and neighbourhoods. Barbara?
Thank you. I mean, sort of the main thrust was that it's a lot of organisations out there doing activities, so we should actually try to expand or bolster them. However, the issue is if people are isolated, the main problem is how to get them to understand that there are activities in their neighbourhood and groups that would support them. So we, I think we decided that the money should be spent on promoting existing activities, then hopefully expanding them, but communication, communicating what is there. At the moment, I really just found out, there is an existing register of activities, an interactive one, that's just been produced, and the barrack has got the link for that. That would certainly satisfy people who are IT literate, but also, in the past, we had a directory of contacts, which actually gave a list of all activities in the areas, and that would be a good idea to have those distributed among notice boards, GP surgeries, anything that is a community hub, like libraries, where people could actually see the information and read it, whether they're online or not. And the other thing that has been, I think it's in Sheffield somewhere, I suggest maybe have a friendship bench, where if people sit on a bench, oh, one of the issues was that sort of, you know, people want to talk, if they're given the opportunity to talk to somebody, it might entice them out of their isolation. So friendship benches have been used, where if you sit on a bench, it means you're prepared to speak to anybody. And that just might actually dissuade some youngsters, come and do the bench if they know somebody else is going to come over and sit next to them, you know, and talk. But the other thing is, it was highlight, I emphasised that it's not just the more elderly who are isolated, young mums are, young people are, and sort of some disabled locked in their homes as well. And that would probably take up the 10,000, just trying to get that done. But after that, it would be, if there's anything left, to expand activities. And mention about social prescribing, but that's the point, of getting information out to the GP surgery, so they can direct people to something that might suit them. Have I covered things?
Yes. Thank you. Yes. Thanks. Okay, Shafer, can you tell you a difference?
Yeah, well, there's some overlap, particularly in terms of trying to map out what exists. One of the things we were clear about was that community assets are much more than just physical buildings, actually, human capital, social capital is there, and in this part of the world, we've also got the universities. We'd had a very interesting conversation about young people and youth, but obviously also about other members of the community, and one of the things we talked about was the intergenerational work, how we can encourage that and actually get involved. There was some debate about crime and the perception of crime, and I think there was a really good example of a PCSO that regularly emails Paul May with data and stats, and maybe how we can, once again, share that information. So the fair point was made that recorded crime is not all crime, because some crimes might not be recorded, but at least what is recorded, we can at least get a sense of whether it's going up or down. We then did talk about businesses and the opportunities that they may give to young people in particular, for work experiences, et cetera. And then the really important point, actually, this is not a standalone issue, it crosses transport, and it will cross other bits, you know, other tables, priorities, and how do we bring that together? We've got a really detailed note taken by Lindsay, and I think what we need to do, Chair, is probably get that in to the notes, rather than just what I've said or Barbara's just said.
Conversation, and I'm 1 minute 30, sorry, Chair. Okay, that, thank you. Okay, right, so those are the specific themes, now the general ones, so Ruth?
Yes, we had the online group, which was excellent. We did manage to cover everything, so I'm going to read it out in a kind of bullet point way, because we... Pardon? Even closer. Okay, I'm going to go in a sort of bullet point style as fast as possible, Chair, because we covered a lot of ground. Bicycle pumps might be useless, they tend to break, they don't work, it's possibly a waste of money. No idling signs are too small and get ignored, and more enforcement is really the thing we need, and/or spending money on larger signs for the no idling zones. And enforcement was something mentioned by several people in the group when we're talking about highways issues, distinct lack of sufficient enforcement to make the measures we bring in actually work. WLO lines, we discussed about, rather than just saying we'll have one per ward with the money that we're being allowed to spend, could we relook at whether to consider road safety as a determinant of where we put this first round of WLO lines, rather than just saying definitely one per ward? So did sort of promise that we would relook at that as a committee. And more comments about enforcement. We should note that school streets do help with road safety, and perhaps communicate with the schools about their travel plans, their active travel plans, and see how those are working. And then more on enforcement. Don't know if you've got that message yet?
I think you're having a number of...
We went on to environment and dog foul, and again, the comment that dog fouling signs on their own are largely useless because they get ignored, and that perhaps the money is better channelled into lots more bins and emptying of those bins. Also mention of using spray chalk to highlight where people need to avoid stepping, and to shame dog owners who are not so responsible. Community renewable energy seems popular, and some more suggestions around that might be using it actually as an educational tool and raising awareness. And there was a mention of codding as a source of fuel and building materials, and bringing in the schools on community renewables as well, and maybe very small scale projects in the parks that might be interesting, like putting little turbines in and then using them as educational projects. And then finally, on communities and neighbourhoods, just to add what other people have said about that subject, just to add that there's a strain on community transport, and when we're looking at facilitating and people getting to events, we might consider helping community transport to get people out and about.
That's it? Thank you very, thank you very much. Roger, was anything you had to add to that, do you? Roger? That's fine. Jo, final table?
Thank you, Chair. So most of our discussion was on the Crooks, Ledge, I think neighbourhood, as to be said. The opinions were divided on the principle of the thing, but actually, there was probably more agreement than disagreement over problems with the implementation of it, the problems with communication and engagement and consultation, that was not good enough. And there were a list of real issues the scheme had, vehicles getting stopped, particularly larger vehicles, coaches, lorries, speeding along one-way sections, inability to turn around in various places. In various ways, the belief was that it was dangerous, and there was a lot of anger, both from supporters and opponents of the principle, I think, that it's been done so badly, and frustration that we don't, that it seems to be just ploughing on, and we don't know when lessons are going to be learned from it. So we need all of that to happen. Coming that the Crooks forum doesn't exist, so consulting them is pointless, I don't know if that's true, but if, you know, if that's the case, we need to check we're consulting properly, as just one example. The other thing I would like to, that came out of the discussion I'd like to raise, is the question of signage for schools re-idling. The observation was that actually, there are a lot of signs already, and people are ignoring them, so I'd like to propose an amendment to that budget item, to say signage and/or enforcement, and perhaps other measures, but and/or enforcement is the main, I think is the main ask for that. Chair, I'd like to move that as an amendment to the budget.
Okay, thank you, Jo. Okay, I know that was a bit brief, but thank you...
Do I have a second there?
Okay, okay, councillor, yeah. Okay, I was just going to thank, obviously thank the councillors for that feedback, but thank all of you for your contributions. I hope you found that a useful exercise. The next thing we need to do is, in terms of item seven, so this is 7E on your agenda, so the actual report, so we have a series of amendments on page 22 for councillors to agree, so we've just had an amendment to the word signage and enforcement, which we've just agreed, that minor amendment. Does anybody want to say anything else about this report, or can we agree this report? So agree that we note the proposed anticipated expenditure against the budget, and then to the extent, it's not by existing authority, authorised the community services manager to make decisions on expenditure relating to the project set out in the report. Can we agree that? All agree? Thank you very much, colleagues. Okay, well, thank you very much for attending this meeting. There's copies of feedback forms on your table, so be grateful if those of you attending in person could complete a form, or wait for the feedback form link to be sent to you tomorrow to complete online. Oh, sorry.
I've just got one item at the end, where I've got some possible freebies to give out, so when you finish...
Okay, okay, I'll go to you in a second. So the next South West LAC public meeting will be October 2022. Date and venue still to be determined, but the expectation is that we'll move around, so it'll be Doran Totley's turn. So over to Colin, I think.
Thank you, thank you. Just the fire authority, I've got a number of leaflets about, it's talking about younger people looking at and helping their older 60s. Well, actually, looking around the audience, maybe there's a checklist of what you ought to do for yourself, and a possibility of getting a free fire safety visit from the fire brigade. There's also information on carbon monoxide, you know, it moves with gas boilers, gas fires, and so on, and if you smell gas and so on. But I also have carbon monoxide alarms, which are, I've got about a dozen, and rather than rushing and grabbing one, if you know of somebody or feel they'll be useful for you, you know, they could save lives as well. So these are long-lasting lithium batteries, and I have them here. But also, I've got a series of information leaflets, so if you want to pick some of those up on the way out, I'd be very grateful, and it'll save me taking them home again.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Colin. So the final thing to say, as I said, thank you ever so much for giving up your evening, and I hope you found the meeting useful. Got some sad news, that both Nick and Denise are leaving us, they've just been here for this interim period of LAC, so they won't be with us for the next meeting, but I'd like, on your behalf, I'd like to thank them for all the work they've done in getting the South West LAC off to a great start, so please, please, thanks. And with that, I'm closing the meeting, and some of us will be around for the next 10 or 15 minutes to answer any private questions you have, so thank you very much, and safe journey home. Bye.